Good evening, Holliston, and welcome to the Thursday, August 26, 2021 Select Board Meeting. We're going to get started right out of the gate with a CARES Act and ARPA programmatic update, for which we'll invite Chief Cassidy to the table to give us a couple of updates and some information.
Some mixed news today in terms of the metrics from the state. Our average number of cases over 100,000 is slightly up from last Thursday, but our positivity rate is slightly down. So it did help that we had almost 200 more people taking tests for a period prior one. So that's all the reasons that one metric can go up or the other one goes down because we have more people tested. But I'm not sure which one we want to take things in this evening. I've got a couple of CARES requests. I know probably the tag team with the town administrator, there are several ARPA requests.
I think we'll go in chronological order as to how the money arrived in Holliston. We'll start with the CARES Act.
Okay, great. My first CARES Act request comes from the town clerk. $750 for a new 24-foot banner, which would come out of the CARES category as elections. So it's largely related to new date changes because we're moving dates. So the town administrator had suggested that if I think CARES eligible, which I believe it is.
Okay, then I will say.
Now, the date for the annual and the fall town meetings and so forth.
And are we, I'm assuming Travis were ready to pull the trigger to purchase this banner? Because we heard back from the Attorney General's office that the article that was passed at town meetings official for the change to an annual town meeting on October the 3rd Monday or whatever the 18th was.
The 3rd rather than the last October. We do have it in writing. We received confirmation that it will be approved.
Okay.
And we are now going to be one of the first fall town meetings on the Commonwealth.
So you're looking for consideration of this pending that final. All right. Do you want to do one?
Yes, that's, that's fine. Second one is $1,500 from the facilities manager. This is related to setting up a tent that was provided for the senior center. The tent was acquired through a grant, but the grant doesn't cover setup. And so this is the CARES category is social distancing measures. So the facilities manager had asked if that would be eligible. Since the whole purpose of getting this tent for the outside is to keep it spread apart.
Okay. Questions? I have a term, sorry.
I just have a general question, actually. Like, I thought we had already allocated 100% of the CARES.
No, after we did some.
30 grand, huh?
Yeah, after we did some super classifications and reconciling of projections, we still have.
30,000.
We still have, we still have 130,000 pounds to be allocated by the end of October.
Okay.
I think the confusion would be, though, when the schools made a sizable request as they looked at. But it happened in FY21 and their, their request at the time, it was projected that, that could have wiped out the balance. There are other moving parts, obviously, besides just that request. And our result is where we are right now.
And I do have a quarterly report for the period of April, May, June due to DLS next week. Okay. But we continue to track both as being to speak the FY21 books and like sure that everything, the schools were something recovered by ARPA, or sorry, by CARES and the people who recovered by FEMA reimbursements. We continue to make sure things are elevated on a daily basis.
Chief, are you prepared to talk about that balance tonight or were you?
I can. Actually, I think the town administrator had suggested, given the volume that you have on the season's agenda, that perhaps when you get me next Monday, which is just a few days away, that we can do a deep dive into that.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
Sure. And then the third CARES Act request was from the assessors for $6,865, which was for two different software packages, NearMap and Pushpin. And this comes under the category of accelerated telework capacity. And this will allow them to catch up on the evaluation properties that they need to do to satisfy their state requirements that got pushed back because of COVID. And then also they recently lost a body that they were anticipating was going to be able to help them catch up on the backlog. And so it's software suite to address that. So that's why it's accelerated telework capacity. So $750, $1,500, and $68, $65.
John, any questions or comments?
No.
Okay, so then I'll entertain a motion for, one motion for all three to come out.
I'll make a motion to approve the CARES Act request as presented by Chief Cassidy. I'll second that.
Okay, you have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that cares. Thank you.
Okay, did you want to transition over to ARPA or was there anything else COVID related that you wanted to question? Especially that, since I do plan to be available.
I have one question. I mean, if this is a fair question, we can shelf table it for now. But we're, I'm hearing about home testing.
Yes.
And if part of the metric that we're being judged on is testing in facilities and such, is how is home testing going to influence how that?
That was covered during a DPH conference call on Tuesday. And the one that would be approved for use in the state, there would be an app associated with it. And that's how the client or the person purchased it over the counter was able to register and be able to get their results. So when you register through the app, you have to enter your address. And so your address gets associated with the community. And then they are required, it's a national testing company, that they will not only give their client the result, but they will also import that up to the state reporting databases.
Excellent. That's the only question.
Thank you.
Okay, I just have one question, and it's really just a yes or no, it's sort of preempting next Monday's conversation. But where, I recall we, you know, CARES, of course, in detail, and then ARPA, of course, in detail. And one area that there was a similarity in terms of eligible expenses was responding to the public health crisis. That said, are there, are there requests under the ARPA, before the ARPA steering group that could potentially shift back into CARES where we have an outstanding balance? Is that a consideration to have as we prepare for Monday night's discussion?
Of the requests that have come in so far, and again, we're still accepting rolling applications. There was a soft deadline of August 2nd. Can't think of anything that would be a better match for CARES. Most of them are beyond the pure scope of CARES. And ARPA is a much better fit because it was designed for recovery as opposed to response actions in the middle of the pandemic. It's more the things that we're seeing are long-term programs to help recover from and process it better.
I thought I saw one for PPE, but I might need.
So that was a placeholder because we acknowledged the fact that come October 30th, we're not going to have CARES funds available.
Right, okay.
Therefore, I put in a couple just, and those were PPE and the building. Just as a place of where we, the ARPA steering group has not reviewed those. They haven't made a vote on them, but I just want to put a stain in the ground. So if we needed to.
A year out or two months down.
Right.
Okay, and that's well beyond what CARES.
That we didn't totally obligate those to work. Right. And we still have access to state and federal surplus as well.
What about the $19,000 that was approved under ARPA for online resources for library patrons? That's another CARES.
I, I can go back and double check the CARES language, but I didn't think that that was as much CARES mesh as it was a an ARPA.
So my blush to Tina's point, it's a good one, is I think it might, because if you exclude ARPA from our conversation, and we were looking for a way to keep our seniors informed and healthy during a time and connect with them using remote means to inform the public of what's going on, was it CARES expense, if I'm not mistaken? So I think it might be worth exploring, excuse me. I think it's a good point, but Tina.
Which we'll get to in a minute. We'll discuss ARPA, which is coming up.
Ready to go? Sure. So let me just give a little highlight. The ARPA steering group has continued to meet, to get through the 17 requests that came in by the soft deadline. On August 2nd, we've now had a couple that came in since then. So what, what the ARPA steering group has not been able to do in trying to get through all of these requests yet is to talk big picture approach to capital, which is a major function, something that I think is going to be very helpful to the town. And so one of the things that we can discuss tonight, or, you know, I also suggested potentially next week, when, when Chief is here and the agenda is a little shorter, that the select board may want to take a look at and discuss and send any notes along to the ARPA steering group on your views on the capital list. It was put together by Ali Perand at our request for shovel-ready projects. Additionally, a few of the requests have come in, I would classify under capital as well. A rail trail request, for example, on FIPS tunnel, with some other ones as well. So with that, again, you know, the ARPA steering group has not got through the entire list yet. There was a, an attempt to prioritize based on a few that were time-sensitive requests. Select Board has approved, so the, the process that's online is for the requests to come in through the request form is available online to be reviewed by the ARPA steering group. Recommendation, if appropriate, made to the select board with, you know, options to potentially seek alternate funding sources or determine that it's not an ARPA eligible expense. So last week, the, the select board did approve the two requests that came through the ARPA steering group with 6-0 favorable votes. Since that time, the ARPA steering group has met on, so, excuse me, the, the select board voted on 8/16, which was about 10 days ago, we're a little off cycle here. Since then, the ARPA steering group has met twice, Wednesday, the 18th, and then yesterday, Wednesday, the 25th. And so what I have, and I can pull up, and then we can put it in larger context as well. But I'll just give a summary of where we are at the moment with requests that have been heard. So the two in blue went through both cycles, the ARPA steering recommendations, 6-0 favorable, the select board approval on the 16th. The ones with the yellow under the select order, the ones that would, that could be discussed this evening. So two requests from Youth and Family Services, one for the Art of Belonging for LGBTQ youth in Holliston, one for Youth and Family Services and Holliston PTO Mind Share Initiative. The library request that Mr. Cronin just mentioned earlier for expanding online resources for library patrons. This is a request that is something that the library has begun to do as it sees a shift in, in the needs of, of library users over time. And this is really going to, the request is really to allow them to sort of kickstart it as they see the need for, for these different online resources exacerbated through COVID. The, then there is one from the COA. The COA is also, has another request in that they're, they're seeking a little bit more information on at the moment. The way the ARPA steering group discussion went on the survey was that there was a recommendation from Chief Cassidy on a, a grant opportunity that would line up very well with this request. And the COA director, Lisa Borchetta, reached out and does feel like it is going to be a potential good fit. That, that could cover up to $25,000 of the initial $45,000 cost. It is a two-part request that would be $70,000 over the life. The ARPA steering group's recommendation at this time is to sort of match that grant, which the process opens early October, and then we would hear within 30 days. And so at this point, the, the ARPA steering group felt like it would like to recommend to you to agree to split that cost at this time and regroup once that grant program closes out. Additionally, the town hall septic, we got the bid opening on that. And to stay on schedule, James Keast and myself requested to cover part, partial costs of that project, which would allow us to stay on actually identical schedule. We would sign that contract tonight if the select board approves the funding and get that project done by the end of the calendar year. And then finally, the rail trail committee made three requests, two related to FIPS tunnel on either side. As you approached FIPS tunnel, and then, and so those requests, the ARPA steering group requested that they go and see if CDC would be a reasonable funding source for that before it's discussed further for ARPA. And a third request, the rail trail committee put forward for safety at crosswalks for RFP upgrades. The ARPA steering group was voted in favor of recommending to the select board for approval. So this is a summary of those requests, but let me also just pull up the full list here to show sort of the extent of the feedback we got from the community when asked for how the various service groups in town, how they could be helped through from ARPA to respond and come out of COVID stronger. So as you can see here, we are now in a position where we have 19 overall requests. We have a couple that came in after the August 2nd soft deadline, including that septic, because the bid opening happened after that. And then a new request from the Holliston Historical Society, which again, I would probably place under capital. So, and additionally, as you saw from the other slide that I had up originally, we have received a second tranche of funding into our actual bank account. So originally, 700 some odd thousand, we did receive another 1.4 plus million dollars. And so we are, we are now probably halfway through the, the funding that we anticipate over the life of ARPA. And so the request that we have, and the ARPA steering group has recommended approval of fit within the dollars that we've actually received, not that we are expecting.
Thank you, Travis.
And as you have questions on any of the ones that have been recommended by the ARPA steering group, I'm prepared to answer which ARPA funding priority under the US Treasury interim final rule for the ARPA program, how it finds out.
Okay, great. Is there, is it possible, or could you please put back up the list that had the votes attached? You're looking for those with votes in favor and nobody voting against here. So we're looking at, I'm seeing six tonight for consideration?
That's correct.
Okay. John and Ben, how would you like to do this, one at a time?
In the interest of time, I actually have one position 20-year request. I just have some comments, but I support what the ARPA screening committee has recommended.
Did you, were you interested in revisiting the expanding online resources for library patrons?
What I'd like to do is to approve it tonight, conditional upon Chief Cassidy's review of if it belongs to veteran care, something back and clean it up. But if it doesn't, then both stand.
Okay.
The only thing I'd like to know is like, if it's, if it's unanimous from the steering group and in favor of the, the items particularly, I just would like to know, to your point, what, where they fall in the, in the CARES, the ARPA treasury guidance.
It's interconorable.
Yeah.
So the Youth and Family Services requests are promoting healthy childhood environments. The library was addressing educational disparities. The facilities request was investments in infrastructure. Trails was also investing in infrastructure. And the survey for council aging was expenses to improve the design and execution of health and public health programs.
Okay, so then I will entertain a.
There's some questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hold on, if you don't mind. The first chief is Travis, too, as well. Regarding the item on the town hall septic costs, this complements the project that was approved in December of 2020, I believe, is that correct? Is that correct? And so consequently, we can't grab the full cost of the septic system project cost because that would have preceded the enabling legislation for ARPA, which was March 10th, 2021. Is that correct?
I would agree with that.
So that's why we're only picking up the delta rather than the full amount, which is largely related to the COVID and post-COVID.
Well, septic systems are straight up, it's a hard qualification, that's no doubt. Right, that's, that's a good one. And also Travis, through you to Chief Cassidy, it's my understanding that communities receiving these grants have to submit or the report to the United States Treasury on the activities of the grant by the end of August.
I believe the state has to submit to Treasury. They have not indicated any NEUs need to.
NEUs do not. Is that your understanding? I don't have anything on the NEUs due by August, from what I received from DLS.
I suspect that's probably the state because they were the original agent to the money.
So do you have to send something to the state regarding your activities at the grant?
No, I think this is probably related to what we talked about in June, that we were under the gun to apply the NEU because they had to make a best faith effort to get the money to the NEUs. And any money not obligated to the NEUs within 90 days needed to be redistributed to any other NEUs. I think they need to demonstrate that they've passed it on to us. They have, you know, by virtue of the fact that the transaction went through, they can demonstrate to Treasury that they met their obligation, but they haven't asked for any reporting on ARPA sending that.
I asked.
You did.
I'm just going to point out, because three of the folks here at this table are on the steering group. If you don't know what an NEU is, it's a non-entitlement unit, and it's a community essentially that's not a city. Essentially, well, anyway, that's what NEU means. I won't get into the definition, but it's a non-entitlement unit, of which Holliston is one. That's why we keep hearing NEUs.
Correct, yeah. As the town administrator, there were two tranches of money that we received for first half of. So there's a non-entitlement unit, and then there's the county funding portion because of the six counties.
Okay, so Ben, did you have any other comments or questions?
I do not.
Okay, so then we're looking for a motion that accepts the recommendations of the steering group for the six items as described.
Do you want me to read this to you?
Yes.
I'm making a motion to approve $1,800 for the Art of Belonging for LGBTQ youth in Holliston. $5,000 for the Youth and Family Services Holliston PTO Mind Share Initiative Program. $19,350 for expanding online resources for library patrons. Contingent, upon Chief Cassidy's review, applicability of that particular round to CARES. $20,000 for survey of 55 local population. $26,350 for town hall septic partial costs. Finally, $34,730 for the rail trail safety crosswalk upgrades. As my motion.
I will second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My pleasure.
And I would, we, we put it up on the screen in the past. The Holliston reporters picked it up. We've discussed it briefly at the ARPA steering meetings. But I would say that next week, especially if you feel you have time on your agenda on Monday with the chief, if the select board wants to go through that capital list and provide some feedback in, in terms of what you're looking for to the ARPA steering group. We are, we, we run into frequently as a, as a steering group trying to get meetings done with busy schedules of, of all six people running out of time. So the more efficiently we could use it, any recommendations, the select board on, on what you're looking for would be up.
Yeah, I mean, I continue to be impressed that the, there's a wide range of aspects of the community affected by these, these recommendations and now votes for the use of ARPA funds. I am definitely curious and look forward to talking about it on Monday night, this Council on Aging Home Repair Program. I'm really interested to hear some details on that and learn a little bit more. I like what I read in the packet. And I, I saw a strong similarity between what this is proposed to be and what Matt Zetic has done with the Clean Energy, the way in which they vetted the vendors and the way in which they did their due diligence on that and the assurances that they can turn around and offer to the community that these are good vendors. I, I really, I am really impressed by that Clean Energy work and I'm curious to hear.
I think it's a great program. And I think there's just a few things, and Yvette was on earlier as the chair of the COA, and Chief Cassidy and I sat down with Yvette King and Lisa Borchetta. That's a good comparison. The other comparison that, that I was drawing was through CARES for the rent mortgage relief that where we teamed up with Youth and Family Services, but also CAFs as fiduciary. That at the moment, one of the concerns that I would see if ARPA steering is able to recommend it, it's like, well, let's support it, is the actual dollars flowing in and out directly from the ARPA funding system problematic. Whereas if we had a third party, whereas the CAF act is fiduciary for the rent mortgage program, that, that might strengthen it and make it a little bit easier for, for us to digest and work out on the backend.
And they have that feedback?
Yes, so we, we're, we are working with them on that. So I think you're right. I think the, the idea behind it is strong. I, I'd just like some time to see if we can work out the, the minutia of it.
Okay, great. All right, well, I don't think you have any other comments for CARES Act or ARPA. So we're going to move on now to the second item on the agenda, which is the Verizon License Renewal. And we are going to bring it up, Chair of the Cable Advisory Committee, Barry Sims. Yes, well, it's just fine by me, so welcome to the table.
Thank you. This is obviously the session of the renewal request of the 14-year license for Verizon. And I would thank the board for your patience in this two-year process. I'm used to it. So, but I would thank you for your patience in this. And also thank Jay Nury and Lindsay Morris for their efforts on the committee. And Mr. Herman has been involved in some of the discussions that we've had with council. And Mr. Prog was on the last meeting, and whether you remember or not, Mr. Strahl was at the very first meeting as a member of the finance committee. So all things come around. It's a 40-page license with your permission. I have tried to boil it down into a couple of pages of summary, and I can go through that with you and, and see what your thoughts are, and then give you the thoughts of the committee afterwards. They are looking for, despite the fact they have 14-year licenses, currently they're looking for a five-year license. Truth of the matter is, they would prefer a three-year license because I think in their opinion, meaning Verizon, the landscape, which is currently a little akin to Quixote on the federal level and also on the state level, it will change over the next three to five years. So they're, they're looking at the outset for a five-year license. We, we have negotiated three channels for paying public, public government and education. And I say that because that's a good thing. Not every town has three channels. Some towns have two. I think there may be one or two towns that actually we have one channel. We actually have three. And a little tongue-in-cheek, I would say, we have an option for four, but we'll never get to see four because the hoops you have to jump through to get the fourth, so just outrageous. But we have three channels, which is a good thing. You folks, as you know, by statute are the licensing authority. Nobody else in town is, not even me. So you get to decide who gets licensed and what conditions. Both, we have two, obviously Comcast and Verizon, and we're fortunate to have two. Some towns, again, only have one. Framingham is unusual, they have three vendors. We have two. So people in town obviously have, have decided between the two. But each of the licenses has what I call, and what's referred to in there as a level playing field, which means you can't be any, you can't be favorable to one vendor as an owner. They want level playing field.
Sorry, Barry, do you, is, is it appropriate for me to put this up on the screen?
And, and the license, as you know, has been available at the town clerk's office for anybody to look at. And if it's approved, we'll, we'll post it so that, you know, residents can take it with them. Every once in a while, I do get a request to give the license. They are, as in the past, are required to, I mean, pretty much Holliston is pretty well built out. But if there are some new areas that are being built, they're required to install their system if it's within 200 feet of their current system. And that's, we think, a fairly reasonable business decision. We haven't really had other than one complaint that I had that we took care of from somebody that had moved into a two-house subdivision. And they were more than 200 feet from where Verizon could connect. We arm wrestle a little bit with Verizon, and they agreed to connect. It was underground wiring, a little more difficult. But that said, I think. But that said, I think the committee feels that from a business point of view, two hundred feet to connect to, um, a new house, um, is reasonable. There's a provision in there about outages, um, for continuous hours, ten percent of the town. Um, they can provide the board with a reporter. Here's the difference between current licenses and new licenses that we just wanna make note of. Uh, you have to request reports this time. I suspect that you'll get them anyway, but, but technically you have to request them according to this new license. Um, here's, here's the really good news, I think, and the fellow behind me, Bruce, will, will probably smile and agree. Um, we've, we've asked, because this is, in our view, a short license. And we have to go through this process again in roughly two years, because you have to serve three years out. We've requested a pretty reasonable, we're gonna have to go through the scan. We have sort of your time, my time, everybody's time, efforts, costs, et cetera. We, um, we've gotten a good chunk of change for HCAT in terms of capital. Two hundred and twenty one thousand, which from a prorated point of view is about forty five percent more than what we're currently getting. In spite of the fact that they are losing subs, they're losing subscribers. So I think. That was pretty good. Um, we also have maintained the five percent of gross revenues, again, much like the three channels. You can assume that. Some towns get three percent, some towns get four percent. Our, fortunately, our first license that we negotiated some three decades ago, uh, had five percent. And it's easier to convince us to continue with five percent if you already get five percent. So we are continuing to, to get five percent for public access. The town also will continue to get fifty percent, fifty cents per subscriber. There are other conditions in here or other, other items in here like toll, maintaining toll free number. Um, they will answer their phone in thirty seconds, no, no smiling or laughing here. If you ever try to reach Verizon or Comcast within thirty seconds. They're not saying you'll get a human being. They'll, they're saying you will get an answer in thirty seconds. I will guarantee you it won't be a human being. Ninety percent of the time they'll answer the phone in thirty seconds. Um, there are outages provisions in here. Again, quarterly reports, the difference here between this license and the current, um, is they have to request the reports. You know, again, you'll probably get them anyway, but it should be on somebody's calendar through a quest. Um, you will be notified with thirty days in advance if there are any significant changes in rates or, uh, channel changes. Um, let me warn you, you have no authority over rates. So if you get the calls from, from your constituents saying, you know, my, my bill's gone through the roof. You can tell them by statute, you have no control of channels or what they charge. They carry a bunch of insurance, that's all spelled out here. Uh, it's a little higher than their current license, which you would expect. If they're in non compliance, you have to give them thirty day notice for a public hearing. And there is an exhibit in the license for public buildings that heretofore we have called free cable to public buildings. The SEC has ruled that cable companies can now charge for, um, ancillary services that are outside of public access. So if they provide you, if you insist that they provide anything like, uh, access to or a cable to a public building. They can, in theory, charge you for that. Now, they have not done that thus far. In the license, it says they will let us know in writing in advance if they're going to start charging us for drops at public buildings. And you folks can then decide if you wanna pay the bill or if you wanna drop those drops. We have included in Exhibit A all of the buildings. Uh, between us chickens, um, since Comcast was the first vendor in town, they really have all the buildings wired. I don't even think Verizon has all of these buildings wired. And if need be, we could probably eliminate Verizon from having to list all of these buildings as public, as free drops. Because Comcast is the one.
So that's all fiber, right?
Uh, Comcast is fiber, I'm sorry, Verizon is fiber, Comcast is not.
So you said all the buildings were done by Comcast, but are all the buildings fiber?
No.
Should we ask for fiber?
You can, but, but again, um, and, and we are effectively asking for, for all the buildings as in Exhibit A. They're gonna charge it for it. You'll get a letter shortly after this thing is signed saying the cost for each building is X. I don't know that you necessarily need two vendors in each building. I don't even know if you need one vendor every building. That's up to you. Here's the difference. And I'll answer the other question we have on that, but I wanna explain the charges. Originally, they were allowed to charge market rate to every building, meaning when you pay a subscriber, they could charge the building. The, the appellate court decided that that's not correct. They can only charge cost per building. It's a big difference. I, I got the rates, they originally gave me, sent me the rates for market rate for each building and they were pretty steep. Uh, they can't charge that. They haven't arrived that, the reason you haven't got the letter about what the charges are is that they haven't figured out what the charges are, what their costs are. At some point, in my opinion, you're gonna get a letter from both Comcast and Verizon saying, here's what it costs for each building. You want us to send you a bill? Do you wanna keep every building? Do you wanna not keep every building? It'll be much, much less than their market for each building. But you'll have, you'll be able to make that decision when they send you the letter. But for purposes of this license, we're asking them, the exhibit shows all of the town buildings in terms of Verizon wiring. And again, you know, the buildings already have Comcast, so you may not want both, you know. I'm, I'm told that even having all the buildings wired, some of the buildings don't really use the service, so. Might be able to pull some of the buildings in the exhibit and find out what you really want, or just have to start paying for it. Uh, the free ride is over, although it's a much better free ride based on the appellate court. Um, and, um, and in the past, we have requested, uh, some, uh, suggestions that will be in a minute from the advisory committee. We have, uh, suggested to this board that you allow the town administrator or direct town administrator to send a letter to pay. Or to send a letter to, to Verizon directing the payments, the five percent payment and the, um. No, not fifty percent, no, uh, and the, and the capital, you get the fifty cent. Capital and five percent, uh, we're, we're suggesting that you send, that you send a letter directly to pay. We negotiated, they didn't want to do that. They wanted the, the money to come to the town and put it in a separate account. Very complicated system. Uh, we've never done that, uh, and we forced them, by arm wrestling, to agree that if you decided that the fund should go elsewhere, that you could send them a letter from the funds elsewhere, as they currently do. So, having said all of that, the two recommendations from the advisory committee is that this license be voted on and approved and signed. And that the town administrator be asked to send a letter directing you to pay credits. That's what I think for it.
Thank you, Barry. I anticipate quite a few questions, so if you're comfortable with that, return to John, then the audience as well, because this is a public service, so.
Actually, I don't have any questions. So I was very mentioned on our last call and caught up with all the work he's done the last three, so. I just wanna send my thanks to Barry and Rock for the last, uh, many years, fifteen plus years on this particular contract, which is real benefits of the community. Uh, many of us take it for granted, but it doesn't just happen. And so the work that put into this, um, I wanna thank Barry very much for his personal commitment and the others on this committee that have done us two volunteer services, always getting something done for Holliston in a wonderful way, so. I don't have any questions. Well done, Barry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. Ben?
Um, I do have a couple of questions. Um, I will reiterate, thank you. I know this is a lot of work and I know you've been doing it for a while. The primer on it at the beginning and how this is a, there's, there's, there's a long, it's a long, it's a long game. Um, so, um, my first question is, um, the license period is five years with an option to cancel after three years. Oh, where's the, who has the option?
Good question. Thank you. Um, and, and, uh, they, they have the option to cancel. So, and they have that same option in the current license.
Okay.
Nothing new.
Yep.
Um, but we're smart enough to recognize that, so what we did is we front loaded all of the fees for the first three years. You know, this, you can arm wrestle that and we, we try to, but, um, it's one of those things. If it's not a good business decision for them and not a good business decision for us. You know, it makes no sense to try and force somebody, because they'll just go to court and they have a lot more loyalty than we. So they wanted a three year out. They currently have a three year out. But we said, fine, we'll give you three out, but we have all the money, all the money in the first three years. So that's what we did.
Okay. Okay, um, my second, uh, second question is, um, so, uh, as I understand it, um, some of the previous, the previous, um, contracts had, um, some capital funding for, uh, like about twenty five thousand dollars. And, um, don't think this, it's in this new contract, just curious what happened and it's, you know, it's really nice to have, so.
Uh, this is where it's, I guess, good to have some district, um, level playing field, we recall that. When, this is Verizon's first license, which is why it's more than ten years. You can only renew, you can only do a renewal for ten years, but you can do a, an initial license for up to fifteen. So that's how you can tell this is their first license, because it's fourteen years. When they came to town, we had negotiated a deal with Comcast, who originally hosted our under. We said to Comcast, we'll let you out of that deal. Uh, we'll build our own, but you pay us for that. When Verizon came to town, of playing field, we had to extract some money from them. Even though they weren't involved in the internet, we extracted money from Comcast, we had to get some money from Verizon. Or so that, so that the payments were somewhat equivalent. That extra money was, um, effectively to replace or to, to, to duplicate the money we were getting from Comcast. We don't get, we, we don't have that from Comcast anymore. We can't get that from Verizon.
Okay, so it's, it's from like a previous, uh, a previous.
To try and, try and level the two, two agreements.
Okay. But we, they, you moved some of that money into like the money, the payments to the. Are they basically paying less?
Well, there were some things that we actually did with those payments, and I think one comes to mind, a phone bill that we were paying for somebody. It's one of those few things that was outside of public access, which is the only reason we didn't move it. I should say this, if, if you take any of this money and use it to replace a light bulb on the street, then. Verizon can ask for that money back.
Right.
As can Comcast.
Yes.
So, um, that was one, one of the pieces that we had the ability to move that outside of access.
Um, those are all the questions I have. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Um, I have a couple of questions. So I, I went deep there on my notes and pulled up the August twenty nineteen comments from a public hearing that we found. Uh, and I went through them, you gave the summary sheet and then the contract as well. So it looks, just confirm for me please, uh, HCAT requested high definition. This contract brings that to them?
Um, excuse me, it, it, it does, um, but it's a little convoluted. It, it's in, it's in the agreement that, um, uh, that, that they will, um, attempt to do, increase the, 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 uh, your high def or, or the speed or, you know, whatever, but here's the problem. And, and we'll take this up with the Comcast contract, because it all starts with Comcast. Verizon gets their signal from Comcast. So everything that you see on, uh, you know, the, the pay channels from Verizon. They negotiated a deal with Comcast where they didn't have to run all the same stuff to, to, uh, HCAT. They would just simply take the signal from Comcast. So even if Verizon went high def, they're only taking whatever Comcast sends them. So if they don't send them high def, they can't break outside that. Next discussion will be Comcast.
So we should anticipate.
Well. I wanna jump the gun, but.
Uh, what will, do you, do you have any idea what HCAT would do with that capital investment of two hundred and twenty one thousand? It's forty five percent increase, that's fantastic.
Yeah, uh, and there was, um, there was a very, very specific list as part of that, um, meeting. Public forum that, um, we presented, that HCAT presented to us and we presented to Verizon. So although I couldn't tell you what's on the list now, and, and even if I saw it, I'm not smart enough to tell you one camera from another.
Okay.
Um, but, but there was a very specific list as to what they would do, um, with it, with the capital funds. You know, this equipment, I will tell you from experience, this equipment doesn't last forever. Uh, and even if you get the best stuff, and they have some very good stuff over in HCAT. Um, you need to operate it pretty regularly, so, um, let me say this, the, the funding that we get them, um, although it's good. It is not overwhelming in terms of the cost of the legislation. And keep in mind, it's also used by volunteers, not TV professionals. Not, nothing against volunteers, but they don't do this as a living, for a living and may not know how to properly take care of things and so forth.
There was also a request two years ago for seventeen fifty to be added. That's now on the, that's now on the list. That was an ask for the, for the town.
Right, yeah, and, 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 and again, since it's, that's one of the ones that's not on the Comcast list as being wired. You could ask Verizon to do that. But I, you may wanna wait to see what the costs are.
Our current license, the one that we're operating under now, also exposes town, the town to the cost of these costs at public buildings.
No, this is, this is, well, the, the short answer is yes. The, the, the SEC, um, said that it takes effect immediately. So they, they could ask us for the money right now today, as could Comcast. Um, I think they were sort of holding off for two reasons. Number one, because it was still in court. And the appellate court decided fairly recently that they couldn't charge market rate, they can only charge cost. They haven't figured out what the cost is yet, so that's one of the reasons you haven't moved the bill yet. My guess is Comcast is in the same boat. At some point relatively soon, meaning probably the next six months, you're probably gonna get a notice saying this is where we question the maintenance bills. And then you can decide which ones you want, which ones not. But yes, they could do that. Com- Comcast could do that today, even though their license runs another three years.
Okay, makes me a little uncomfortable, but I know Travis is on top of this and, um.
There'll have to be a notice.
Yeah. Um, okay, so, uh, we've all had a chance to ask our questions. I'm gonna turn to public for comment or question. We've got folks in the room and then we have folks on the call. Anyone in the room who'd like to ask a question? Share a comment? Okay, so anyone on the Zoom call? If so, please raise your hand and then press star six to unmute. So I don't see any, excuse me, I don't see any hands way up for questions, so I think job is done.
One other thing, just, just by way of, of information, because we do have a, I have scheduled a public hearing. Comcast, um, just to get into the next item, Comcast has sent us their letter saying they're interested in renewing. Which means we have six months to hold a public hearing. Six months is mid, mid September. So, and we have to give two weeks advertised notice of a public hearing, so we're, we're pretty tight. I have taken it upon ourselves to schedule a public hearing for September ninth in Comcast, because we're kind of up against.
Twenty twenty one.
Yeah. We were not meeting that week, so we discussed, there's two entries that could be the public hearing. Be you, the Cable Advisory Committee, discussed with the attorney, uh, team. And based on the timing and, and, uh, when it had to be done by plus the holiday week, um, uh, the, the meeting was posted for the night.
So the Cable Advisory Committee is going to hold that public?
And, and I don't wanna assume anything. I, I don't, there's no sunset on our, on our committee appointment, but I don't wanna assume that you want us to continue unless you tell us you want us to continue. I don't wanna assume that you want us to continue unless you tell us you want us to continue.
To hold that hearing on the.
Well, to, to hold that hearing or, or, and/or negotiate with Comcast.
That sounds like.
Well, I do.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're avoiding yourself.
Yeah, so two things on that. One, and, and we'll go over it under item number six later, um, the, the costs associated with the legal fees. Um, and, and Barry's group obviously has been, um, aided by legal counsel, was, uh, paid for through a previous town meeting warrant article, and it was associated specifically with the negotiations contract. As we go into Comcast, what I've put on as per discussion, the warrant hasn't closed yet, is an article, uh, in preparation of the legal costs that we're going to the Comcast, um, discussion. So, uh, I think what, what Barry is also alluding to is the fact that there, that is the legal component, that is, that is, um, you know, engaging that legal counsel, which for this was, was, um, Attorney Epstein. Um, but then the other component, obviously, the work that's been done with that attorney on your behalf, uh, has been, uh, the Cable Advisor. It's another way of wording that, and, and do you want that to continue?
Okay.
Uh, I think it's an affirmative would be, uh, what Barry has.
Okay, and there's nothing about the September ninth public hearing that commits us to spending for legal services? This is just a step in the process.
You're required to have a public hearing once they advise you, once the licensee advises you that they wanna renew, we're required to have a public hearing.
So you're actually looking for a couple of things.
Three things probably.
All right, so why don't we move then, or, or progress, I should say, for a motion to accept the license agreement as well as direct the town administrator to contact.
The clerk's office.
Clerk's office, John, whenever you need. I'm glad you've announced them.
So I have two motions. Uh, first is to recommend, a motion to recommend approval of the Verizon five-year cable TV license presented.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
The next motion is, uh, I will make a motion to recommend that the select board authorized the town administrator sign a letter to Verizon requesting a five percent end capital payments listed in the Verizon's cable license reissued directly to Holliston Cable Access.
I will second that motion.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And then Barry, what would you like for the September ninth? I see you're posted, you've got your agenda up there, so you're really looking for the meeting appointment.
Well, I, I did, you know, again, I don't wanna assume that you want us to continue, both in terms of the committee and in terms of the attorney. So I just thought I would put it before you, and if you want us to continue, we will.
No, I, I think there's, there's obvious clear reason to engage against with Comcast and the, the, the negotiation with them. You are obviously a very good committee doing very good complicated work. There's just a real reason why we do not beg and plead you to do that work, which is what I'd like to do. So, would you like a motion from this board?
It's up to you.
Uh, it, it's unnecessary.
Great.
I actually, it's not on the agenda.
Yeah.
Right. So I.
The good news is, by the way, the Comcast contract is ten years, so.
Yeah.
That's the good news.
I won't be there on the ninth, but I'm glad you're holding the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, so that closes out the second.
There are, just, uh, at the clerk has, uh, why they pack it over there so large, there's three copies of that originals, uh, one which we'll keep and, and for that purpose. Um, so if we get all three signed tonight, that, um, my office looks good.
All right, thank you. So we're gonna move on to, uh, the warrant for this evening.
Warrant, a total seven hundred forty-four thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-five cents, I'm making motion to approve.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That carries? Okay, any other public warrants I heard?
Travis, uh, this was a, previously signed?
Yes, because of Monday, it needed to be signed, um, uh, and so the, the motion is obviously after the fact, but, um, the checks went out based on, uh, us getting it, and thank you for being accessible, uh, select board members, uh, in advance.
Yeah, thank you, Tom.
So in those instances, we just put it on the next agenda.
Okay, so we're all set on warrants, so we're gonna move on to public comment. Uh, John, do you have any public comments?
No problem.
Ben?
Um, I have one. Um, I just wanted to mention, um, that the Farms Day is gonna be held on September twelfth from ten AM to four PM. It's sponsored by the agricultural. Uh, I believe, I'm, I'm not sure, but I, I think we'll probably put something, we'll put something on the website. So there'll be something on the website. Basically, it's an opportunity, um, there's like all sorts of, uh, programming and things happening at a farm throughout town. Um, and I believe it is a rain or shine on September twelfth.
Thank you, and my public comment is also for September twelfth. The Holliston American Legion is holding the annual nine eleven awards ceremony Sunday, September twelfth at ten AM at the Holliston Senior Center. Um, this year, eight members of the Holliston Police Department, six members of the Holliston Fire Department, and our local animal control officer will be recognized. So, um, that is a community event that will work the ten day term out. Um, so any public comment from those here in the room or on the Zoom call? All right, back, yeah, come on up. Just your name and your address and, and your comments.
How are you?
Uh, how are you?
You guys work so hard, we appreciate it. So, um, twenty fifth Park and one eighty-four Wood Street. Um, and I'll try to be great, so maybe we see, yeah, if you bring props to me to, well, just pay. I, I think you've already seen me, but just really briefly, because we're talking about doing the, um, water testing, so. So just in the pictures that you've already seen. What, what this is, is something called manganese.
Panic material.
Well, yeah.
It's not preferred in.
Um, to that extent. So, there is no minimum, um, no maximum, I'm sorry, there's no, it's not included in the water tests.
Okay.
The state of Massachusetts does not have a maximum allowable level of manganese. Um, but the Brewster Massachusetts Health Department did put out warning, excessive manganese in drinking water can now be considered a public health risk. Okay, so my drinking water could be tested, and it's fine, because there's no level for manganese.
Okay.
And I think you saw, like, you know, the, the rust on the gloves.
Okay.
I think that's too much manganese. Okay, that's what I'm showering in, that's why I can't use my water to wash my hair. Can't use it, and it just seems to me like another delaying tactic on the part of the town. And then it was suggested that the Mass DEP do, do the testing. And the Mass DEP is already in the back pocket of the town. So, you know, I kind of resent that as well. So, I just want this taken care of.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
You mentioned Mass DEP doesn't have an opinion on manganese in the water. Did I characterize that the right way?
Well, I just know that the state of Massachusetts does not have a maximum level there. Like, they're looking, they have, um, labeled it as something of potential interest. The state, I guess it would be the state.
I, just as he was speaking, I just went on their website. There's a little bit more to it than that.
Okay.
In terms of fairness, they, they do mention recommended water concentration limit, a lifetime exposure to manganese, such and such. They recommend that infants up to one years of age not be given water with manganese concentration greater than point three kilograms per liter, et cetera, et cetera. So they, I think they are publicly declaring manganese to be of some level of concern for public drinking, so just to be clear.
Well, I don't wanna be showering personally, and it's been twenty years again. And then, so recently, I, um, changed out the whole house filter, and I think what happens when it's being done is like, um, because you have to turn a couple of levers off, and then when you turn it back on, it's kind of like a vacuum is, we're formed. So I happen, the next thing I happened to do was turn on my bathtub water. And so the rust color of the water and the particles, and I'll video it next time, it all comes out. And it means that stuff is getting through the whole house filter, because I'm seeing it in my tub. And then I went down and looked at my brand-new filter, it was rust-colored. And then the next time I went to turn on my kitchen faucet, which I have an additional filter on, it was blinking yellow, because, you know, it had gotten filled up from the process, and I have to, you know, this is just, it's costing me all my retirement money. It's just not right. And I tried putting in for an abatement, because I thought my house wasn't worth anything really because of the water, and that was tonight. So I'm gonna, did try to be proactive, to try to save myself some money that way. Um, and we do know, you know, we can look it up, that big, I don't think water mains should be below three inches. So I did send an email out like two weeks ago that I didn't get a response to, so I don't know if that.
To the town.
To the select board? Did you not receive it?
I, I don't recall an interrogatory in your email, but go ahead.
Okay, well. Well then, I mean, I can go and see if I sent it, because, um, it might be something you'd rather do via email.
I have an August, uh, question.
Um, but I'll just mention quickly the engineering study, um, which isn't gonna get done fast enough for me anyway. But, you know, I pointed out in the email that that service line, I'm trying to call it service line now, the water main, um, that water main, the two-inch one, only um, serves two houses. So if there's an engineering study, and there's a water main that serves twenty-five houses and one that serves two, that is probably not gonna be at the top of anybody's list. And also, the way things are going, I wouldn't be surprised if someone in the town would just say to them, oh, this is on the list, but we're not really concerned about it, and that would be the end of it. So, I just, I, I need some relief from this, and we, we figured out what the problem is, well, I figured out what the problem is, and we know it's not supposed to be below three inches, um, or it's not recommended to be below three inches. So, you, you're replacing water mains right now, it's short. It's just like two, a couple houses long, and it would give me some relief. And, you know, the fact that either because people were unaware that there was a, a water main and not a service line, which is not an, you know, people overseeing the water main, um, project should know the difference, or else they were purposely telling me it was a service line instead of a water main. And, and if that's the case, you kind of lose all credibility, because that's just wrong.
You are, I'm still looking at the August third email, and I see this as information sharing, I, I, I don't see a question asked, um, just couldn't, just couldn't figure it out. You visited this, you had public comment prior to this August third email, and I, if I'm, so I think what I'm hearing is similar comments to the magnet, manganese is a new.
Right.
Comment that you're making, um, but at the time.
I guess I would like an answer. Did the town not know the difference between a water main and a service line? Or was I purposely told it was a service line after they were calling it a water main for a very long time? I found out that water mains weren't supposed to be below three inches, and then they sent me on another wild goose chase, which was it? Because I don't think either is acceptable.
So, to that specific question, I believe the comment from the town administrator at the last public comment period you were here for was that we were going to wait for the STANTEC water main replacement study.
That does not answer the question of why I was told it was a service line when it was not. So are the people overseeing the water main project unable to tell the difference between a water main and a service line? It's a millions, millions, and millions of dollars project?
I cannot answer that question.
Okay, well, I think it's important to find out. I mean, you know, like I said, the town does a lot that is right, but I think that we also need to take responsibility. I mean, to tell me that it's a service line when it isn't, and I'm not an engineer, and I have to spend all my time and add to the stress of figuring this all out, it's not right.
Is that, if I had to give my situational answer, because I'm not an engineer, I'd probably say you're right. But I, but I also have to say about the town, we're trying to work with you and get to the right place for an answer. I have immense sympathy for your ordeal, which you have to go through. But the process of getting there unfortunately is driven by governmental processes, it'll take a while. But there is relief on the way, in the form of two-year shows. The chair just mentioned the STANTEC study will identify what's going on with that service line, and then, as you know, water treatment.
I appreciate.
Um, and then, of course, the water treatment plant, which is underway. So, you've been, you've had it under, you, you've had to endure a lot. And I, from the moment I started talking with you, I have immense sympathy for you, but I, as I sit here, I wonder why I have need to argue about whether or not the service line, the main lines, and some of the important answer. I, I know it's important to you, but.
No, no.
In the bigger picture, I feel like with a little bit more patience, and I know we've probably tried enough of yours already, we'll get to where we need to go. But winning a, winning a, an argument over, um, over verbiage, to me, is not as productive as getting the job done.
Okay, well.
To, to fully satisfy your whole.
If I may state.
Please go ahead.
Okay. Massachusetts states that water mains should not be below three inches. There was a two-inch water main that's causing my problem. That's why I am not, you know, I, I think it's wrong for people to start calling it a service line, so I'll shut up. Okay, that's, that's, it's not, it's not semantics.
Right.
Okay.
But agreeing with you means that something has to be done, correct?
Right, so what if this engineering study says, well, it, you know?
Right, I, I. But I, I, I think, you know, I, I, I.
And what is, I'm sorry, what is, this must be finished?
Uh, in the next few weeks, it's, it's soon, very soon. And, but, I mean, I, I sympathize with you, but from what I hear too, I wanna make sure that whatever solution we do fixes your problem. I wanna make sure that we can fix it, and part of this, uh, to, to John's point, some of this stuff is slow, unfortunately. And some of it, like, we have to have, like, we have to do certain things in certain ways to, to repair the problem. If the, the solution, as you're suggesting, is expanding the line, there might be other solutions, there might be, we have to make sure that we get it right and fix the problem. And that's really where we have to defer to the, the engineers to help us to.
I know they, I, I'm sorry.
To fix it. We, we, we have, I mean, I'm not an engineer, none of us are. So we have to defer to them to be able to tell us, this is the problem, this is how we fix it.
Okay, so I'm, I guess I misunderstood about the study, because at some point, what I heard was that they were going to try, they were basically gonna in some way prioritize what needed to be done.
That is an aspect of the study. I don't know that that specific, I would not say that specifically applies to the issue that you raised. I think in terms of prioritizing, we're talking on a much broader, larger scale, town-wide. Your issue is specific, and I would, sorry, just one more, two more comments. Um, I would encourage you to continue to come to public comment, share your images, and to share your story. We need to know about it, and we're happy to hear about it. Um, and just in terms of the water testing, I do recall at your last public comment that there was a request to, to have someone come in and do the testing. It's gonna be a third party. You mentioned Mass DEP today. I'm gonna turn to the town administrator and just ask if there's an update on that testing of the.
Well, no, I, I, I turned down the, the offer of having the Mass DEP come in, because they're, they're at the town, and they are already in groups about this.
Is there another third-party option?
I could, I mean, I could probably get, I could probably, I don't have much of us to hire someone, but that being said, I know this, this, I know, you know, if you tell me it's safe to drink, I don't wanna be showering in this brown stuff, you know? I wanna be open, washing my hair and my clothes.
I think we're just trying to gather as much objective information as possible, because that's the, most likely, the, one of the best ways to make a statement.
We, we, we're part of our, part of our obligation in, in our roles is to the rape parents, and one of the things that I don't wanna see is them to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, I'm not saying will, but I, to not fix the problem. We wanna make sure we fix the problem in the best way possible.
Okay, well, no, I appreciate that. I misunderstood about engineers, because I just thought it would get blown off again.
The, the.
Due to the bottom of the.
We'll address.
There are two houses.
Dead ends of the system, and this is a dead end of the system. The two-inch line dead ends at the body of water. Um, and so all dead ends are being specifically addressed within the study, so this dead end, including the two-inch aspect that comes off of the curve to arch, will be addressed in the study, and I think that's, that's what we're, we will have answers through that.
Okay. This is complicated stuff. We may, may need to revisit these details again when you, if and when they come in the future with public comment.
I'm also interested to see what they have to say, so I'm glad to hear it's gonna be in the next few weeks, so.
It should be very soon, should be very soon.
Never found it, I was happy to have your one, and please.
Yeah, okay, I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment from the room or from the Zoom call? All right, seeing none. All right, seeing none, we're gonna close public comment and move on to the recycling center. We have some proposed vendor changes, for which we have our sustainability coordinator, Matt Zedek, here to present the premises. Hey, Matt, I see you.
Likewise, see you first.
Yes.
Uh, thanks very much for the opportunity. Uh, seeing the select boards support this evening for changing out some of the vendor systems up at the Marshall Street Recycling Center. The timing is good in part because the recycling markets are improving, so we'll be perfectly taking advantage of that. Uh, as we know, the recycling center is a main asset in town, used by lots of folks, really provides valuable services. Wanted to thank Tom Smith for his role in just trying to think this through and make sure that we're covering the bases. Of course, one of the aspects of doing this would be to improve the operations up there as well with the DPW staff that helps uh, service the recycling center. It's also good timing and I want to thank the select board and also folks at town meeting for, um, endorsing the revolving fund for the recycling center area up there. And this will be an opportunity to really get things going on that front. So in a nutshell, uh, we're talking about the cardboard service and the scrap metal service. From the scrap metal side, it would simply be, right now, those are, services are being provided by one vendor, uh, Burke Woods Trucking. We've been doing that for a number of years. On the scrap metal side, uh, we basically would be changing a vendor to Frehingham Sowage. It's the company being proposed. Another family-owned business from the Metro West area, it's been around for a long time. Uh, the change would be to, if this would be, from what the residency would be, pretty much the same service that they have. Uh, similar to the container, walk your scrap metal in, drop it off, you're good to go. Uh, the difference on the town side is we could be saving money on, uh, reduced hauling costs down to zero. And we'd also be generating revenue for the, through the, um, the disposal of the scrap. So basically saving some funds from the cost side, generating some revenue on, on the scrap. On the cardboard side, I mean, Burke Woods has been providing that service as well as one roll-off computer up there, as anybody who goes up there knows. Uh, that scenario where we should see some good service improvements in part because of the new arrangement, we'd have two roll-off containers up there. Uh, and with the assistance of the recycling, we can, we'll be able to help, um, try to maximize the efficiencies there so we don't overflow cardboard. Uh, when the center closes on a Saturday, or cardboard blowing around and, uh, through, through the rest of the weekend perhaps. And then, of course, our DPW staff has to come in at the beginning of the week and try to clean that stuff up and we'll, we'll picture up with. Uh, and the, so the cardboard side will be improving operations. It would also, wouldn't be generating any revenue, but would also be saving some funds because of the reduced hauling costs. So each time that cardboard container currently is called out of Marshall Street, that cost is two hundred and twenty dollars per haul under this arrangement, uh, with, uh, yeah, this would be with DL Harvey and Sons, our curbside vendor as well. Uh, another local family business. All three of these businesses we're talking about, sort of base. Uh, but the reduced cost would be down to one hundred and seventy-five dollars per haul. So that's a twenty percent savings on the hauling cost. So, that's in a nutshell. Have any questions? Can we see that?
Uh, John, do you have any other questions?
Nope. Uh, I found myself in a place again complimenting the work of, um, some folks on our behalf. This is great work. Um, when you think about Tina, you have some shared history here. The work we've asked Matt to do, remember going back to one of the first ones, tackle the recycling center, do something with it, make it a little bit more vibrant and profitable. So you're doing that. I guess there is one small question. On the scrap metal side, Matt, what do we estimate might be an annual revenue, um, that, that the town could expect to receive into that revolving fund?
Good question. Uh, last year, we actually counted the year 2020, recycled, uh, just over eighty tons of scrap metal uh, through the Marshall Street Center. So we could generate roughly ten thousand dollars in revenue with this venture. And it's probably dependent on the mer, how markets go up and down, but that's, that's-
Is it too early to ask the question, what the committee would seek to do with that type of revenue once it lands into the account? Is it gonna go back into, um, the recycling center management program? What do, what do you expect to do with that savings?
It's a large part with the, with the guidance of Travis on that aspect. Uh, some of it will go for, for improving the services at the recycling center. In fact, a very small amount of fund will probably be needed for this vendor change. Uh, getting a colon or two and some tape to, again, so-
If I could make a recommendation, we have the recycling center open, what, two days a week right now? Uh, to the extent the additional revenue could increase the frequency that it's open, might get more revenue. Um, but that's always been an issue with residents because they have to time, they have to, you know, time their weekend around when they can make the trip. So Travis, is there some way you could use these, uh, resources to expand on? I think the board would favorably look upon that, I'm sure.
I'm just calling up, um, on the established fund, which was Article twenty-four of May Town Meeting. Um, we did identify that, uh, the select board request is an expense payable, um, allowable, uh, excuse me, to the fund would be to, um,
Staffing.
increase, uh, the availability of staffing to have, uh, more hours of operation. Is one of the, the items. So the cost wages and expenses related to both operations, recycling centers, sustainability projects, the town halls is the allowable expenses.
So we're at one day a week right now. I think we could, at a minimum, go at two days. So, um, I'll look for you, Travis, to coordinate how we can get there, maybe into the board's system. As the fall approaches, I think that'll be-
Absolutely. And so, uh, this is not the first example, obviously, as, as Mr. Cronin mentioned. This is another example of the sustainability coordinator bringing us these ideas. The first one, the textile, um, changes that, that are bringing in, you know, not sizable amounts of revenue, but revenue that did not previously come in. So in FY twenty-one, before the fund was established, that was six hundred and thirty dollars. It was the general fund. A hundred dollars so far in this fiscal year. You know, these are, as we built these up, um, and then the fund begins to, uh, be in a position where we can talk about sustaining, you know, an, an extra day and year and there. Uh, I'll bring that back to the, to the board with the sustainability coordinator.
That's a great point, John, about spending the hours of the recycling center.
Uh, it's chronic issue. Anything we can do to improve the services, that's where it's for. Get it done.
Then any questions or comments?
Um, well, um, my comment, I do think this is great. I do like, you know, like hearing from you and like, you know, these kinds of things. I think this is some of the stuff that we need. Um, my only question would be, you're saying that some of the, the hauling costs have been reduced to zero or-
On the scrap metal.
On the scrap metal side.
Partly factor that into the overall revenue, although that would be generating, so you're not gonna be providing, and no business will provide that type of service for free. But that's factored in and will still generate additional significant revenue.
Is, I, I was just curious if you had a sense of like, uh, like what kind of savings the, the town would see from that, or is it just all, if, if any, at all?
Uh, we should, over, between the two, we should see a couple thousand dollars anyways on the savings on the hauling costs.
Great.
I'm sure you've otherwise been hitting the sellout of this budget.
Okay, awesome. That's all I have. Thank you.
Hmm, that's an interesting point. Uh, okay, thank you. Uh, this is great work. And, um, I appreciate that you got Thompson's input because you mentioned that Burke Woods is a longstanding relationship with town halls. And so to make this change, knowing that you've had input from Thompson, who also has a longstanding tracker in that town as, as our, uh, our supervisor for, has been years. It's been here, is, is meaningful to me. Um, I'm glad to hear that you provided input. Um, you often talk about environmental impact of some of these decisions. I was reading through this carefully, looking for that. I know somewhere in here, there's also a silver lining in terms of the environmental impact. And I'm thinking it probably has to do with not having the cardboard on the ground. But if there's anything that you can speak to in terms of environmental benefit, maybe there's not. Um, but I'm always interested to hear what you have to say in this regard.
I've been a little, in terms of that aspect, it's more the service, reducing costs for the town, generating some revenue. Uh, one of the nice things, and I appreciate the mentioning of textiles, is that we're basically trying to have a one-stop, like, one-stop service for our, for our residents that have a place to bring on liver and materials. And that's why I appreciate the board's support for expanding to the textiles. Because again, that just added a, instead of somebody bringing their textiles to another place in town, you have drop boxes all around. Um, you know, you can just go one place and get your cardboard, your scrap, your electronics, your leads, your cardboard. Uh, and again, the textiles is another revenue generator for the town. Uh, you can get a tax, potentially get a tax receipt to offset the utilization. Just nice little benefits like that, that can help with people, uh, increase their use of, uh, the textiles at the recycling center. That's sort of a last stop when you go around the loop, if you go there. You've got the cardboard as that last, the old last stop. And then just after that are those two textile boxes. And again, the other nice part about that is some of the proceeds from the textiles, we received a little bit of revenue. But some of the, uh, proceeds also go towards some nonprofit charities, which is important as well.
Do you see, speaking of the, like a one-stop shop there at the recycling center, do you see any future, in the perfect world, down the road, any future expansion for the types of services that a resident could expect there?
The perfect world you described unfortunately would be related, uh, uh, as a result of an imperfect world. That makes sense. So in, in a nutshell, all these actions at a local level are pretty much dictated by waste bans established by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. They're somewhat unfunded mandates depending on how they work out. So, the next things on the DPD's radar are banning box springs and mattresses.
Okay.
And also textiles. And then the third one would be, this one would impact our services. It's reducing the level of how much food waste is generated per week for certain institutions right now. Institutions generating more than one ton per week of food waste, have to get it composted. The DPD's gonna be reducing that at half, at half a ton per week. But to your point, the box springs and the mattresses probably is, we've got the textiles in place now already in anticipation, but also the improved services, the next one would probably be box springs and mattresses. Um, thankfully, the, they, originally the DPD was gonna try to be implementing this starting in October, like, uh, a month and a half now.
Right.
Uh, folks like myself and others have been providing significant feedback.
Okay.
Saying, please don't do this right now. This, in large part, I, I think we would all love to recycle box springs and mattresses. But in the current world, and they've been trying to do for a long time, there are just very few locations in the Commonwealth that do it. It's a very costly service. It's important, but until the costs go down, it's just gonna end up chewing up things that we're currently spending money for other services and then it's gonna have to be recycled and taped. So.
Okay. All right, um, well, so you're looking for a motion from us tonight? Before we get there, I'll just turn to the public for any comments, get a town service, so. If anyone on the call or in the room would like to write a public comment. All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the proposed vendor changes presented this evening.
So, second.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Matt, thank you for your, uh, work on this. This is a great caller.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it.
All right, so we're gonna move on to the next on our agenda, which is the Fall Town Meeting, more development discussion. Travis, you provided the board, uh, a draft preliminary sort of look at what the market could will present. So you're looking for, just to introduce this?
Yeah, so I think, you know, this is really the beginning of our discussions, right? And so we have, um, at this point, when, when you open the warrant, um, we sort of dictate, or we let people know that the anticipation date to close it would be, anticipated date to close it would be September twentieth. So we are, you know, still in that period, but when we do close it on the twentieth, it's going to be a pretty quick turnaround between then um, and when the, the document production, uh, goes into effect. So really, um, the, the Monday night, when it is closed on the twentieth, will be the night, you know, for you to take any, you know, significant actions. Again, the twenty-seventh, most likely, may be time where we decide to, uh, remove something, add something, if, if we, uh, excuse me, remove something at that point, um, before we go into document production. So right now, um, I've kind of put everything together for you that I have on my radar. Um, the, the standard, uh, beginning, six articles, um, and then from there, um, you know, a number of things that we've discussed leading into last May, since last May. Um, a citizen's petition that I'm aware of is circulating. Um, and so I put it on here just to, to make sure that, you know, from a standpoint, it doesn't get lost. Um, although the, no signatures have been returned to the clerk's office on that, but we are getting some feedback from residents that they're receiving it. Um, and then additionally, a few things that I'm, I'm aware of went into the CPC ahead of their deadline, which was in mid-July, um, which includes, uh, parks and rec requests and, uh, the Blair Square Committee's request. So with that, I, I would just ask, um, and I, I do have a call with council. Uh, the chair will be with me and the town planner on a, on a number of their items, but also, you know, the town items and canvas revenue that we've discussed and other items, like that. Um, and I'll have that conversation with her tomorrow. So I would say, you know, moving forward on a weekly basis, we'll be having these conversations. We are going to miss the week of Labor Day. Um, and so, you know, it's gonna come on quick, uh, in terms of the twentieth and the twenty-seventh of September, so. With that, I would just say, if there's anything on here that, that you, you believe is missing based on our conversations, um, or that you've heard from other groups that you liaison, uh, that you are liaise? What is the verb? He's the one who asked that.
Collaborate.
For that one, most.
I have one question.
Sure, uh, the Blair Square piece.
Yeah.
So the Blair Square Committee, um, and I, I did receive some, uh, information from them. Ben has been, um, keeping up with their, um, their work, intends to speak with you, the planning board. Um, and so right now, I'm just waiting for a date to put them on your agenda. So I have another business. I'm just gonna bring it up. Okay, uh, do you want to bring it up now?
I certainly can. I mean, um, I talked to Kevin today and we, uh, are meeting, uh, Blair Square Committee meeting next Wednesday. Um, I, I believe it'll be the thirty-first. The intention is, is to, to come for us on the thirteenth. Was that in pencil or we put it in? It's a question. I, I, this might be, I think, I know it's outside the scope of Blair Square, Travis, but when the job was completed behind Casey's, um, there was some work that could not be completed due to budget, the grant, I believe. And that's specifically the fencing that separates the trail from the private property. Is that something we could, um, add into the mix of funding for the Blair Square ask? Or perhaps even listed separately to complete that section? I hope you know what I'm talking about.
I, I do. So there are wooden posts instead of granite, I think is the conversation?
No, no.
Uh, so there's, uh, there's the old rail fence that I don't believe is owned by the town. I think that's the private property.
Okay.
As you walk along the trail, there's clear access into that visually, it's, it's not exactly safe. But I believe when that part of the rail trail, do you recall this to you?
I'm listening.
When we were looking at that property as, uh, being redesigned, um, behind Casey's, there was discussion about putting up new fencing. Um, and I think they just ran out of money, uh, that was associated with the, uh, the grant. Karen might have the information on that, but it was more of a privacy fence.
Like a stuck gate, stuck gate fence along.
I can't remember if it was ever specked or anything, but, um, it's unfinished business associated with the link to the Blair Square, if you will, what we're trying to accomplish on it, Casey's at the time.
Okay, I can look into that.
It's probably a small, but all it's put up.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, obviously, uh, in terms of rolling into the, the request from the Blair Square, there, there was a number that was floated, but I think the, the idea at the time was that that is still being, uh, the pencil's still being sharpened on that. Um, and so, you know, I, I think it, it probably, if I'm understanding the, the question, it, it might be a different, a separate request, um, to, to separate it from the Blair Square, although it might be CPC eligible and therefore, uh, let me, let me take a look.
Ben, so their meeting, uh, Blair Square Committee meeting is meeting on the thirty-first?
Yes.
Okay. Have they had a meeting since the ninety percent plan, design, uh, provision plan?
There was a, an informal, not, um, not an actual meeting, uh, uh, informal walkthrough the other day, just to kind of look at the space and then sit down and talk.
Okay.
Um, but there's nothing, it was not, it was not a meeting or anything like that.
So they'll meet on the thirty-first and then
Right.
they will meet again until they start appearing with boards and committees.
Yeah, the thirty-first is pretty, uh, pretty close. Uh, they didn't meet. Part of it was the designer was on vacation.
I think they have a lot of work to do. Okay, all right.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna shrug right now.
Yeah, fair enough. Um, Travis, I don't think that we have a tack request coming. We have a tack meeting scheduled for September first.
Okay.
We wouldn't meet again until after the warrant closes and I'm not aware of any potential tack requests for the warrant. So we're looking at nineteen to twenty articles. That's assuming we have any kind of citizen petition brought forward. So this is a smaller court warrant.
Yeah, I, I know some of these things might be on here simply so that we don't lose track of going and maybe cross out. Uh, and I think that, you know, with this list, if we feel like it is comprehensive enough, we are looking at what I would consider, you know, not something that I, I'm I'm concerned about in terms of it being too large, you know, if, if anything were to change it to now in October. Um, I think we could keep it short if we need to. There, you know, there's important business that we need to do, uh, but it's not overly large at the moment.
And the four here that have planning attached to it, uh, do you happen to know if their planning board is taking any of these up on the agenda, coming to the agenda? To discuss?
Um, I believe that Karen will be involved with our call tomorrow and, and I'll, I'll know more at that point. Um, I do know that the road acceptance potential conversation for Highland subdivision, um, specifically, the Highland subdivision, uh, is now on a planning board agenda for next week, which would be the Thursday. Chris knows the schedule. Is it Tuesday or Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday. So I believe that the Highlands subdivision and then that would, if, if they are willing- Thursday. So I believe that the Highlands subdivision, and then that would, if, if they are willing to go forward and, and D P W has their punch list done, then that conversation would come to you. So we still have time to, uh, get information from the planning board before we have that.
Okay.
That's the one that I'm tracking at the moment.
Okay.
Um, and then the other ones, as I said, uh, you know, there's some changes that happening at the state level on C C C that, um, you know, I'll get, yeah, Kate Federoff's feedback, bring that to you and we can have that discussion for a warrant closes.
Okay. John, did you have a comment?
Uh, just a one, one remark. Um, a few years ago, this board worked with the schools to develop a, uh, uh, capital request policy. Um, so I don't see any articles. I'm sure there'll be some capital requests. So as a reminder, just to fill them in, I think you owe me, it's not just, no, if they have any asks, how they're coming to go back to the policy. Make sure they come to us, um, or they go anywhere else. And number two, I don't think the government's committee has anything on the fall, but I haven't heard anything.
They did meet last night, Tuesday night, last night, I believe, uh, with Mary Buzga and Sharon Emmerich. And I believe they were meeting, joint meeting posted with the Board of Accessories. Um, and I think that if they have anything, it would be specifically related to the bylaws and or, um, anything specific to, to those particular departments, um, and how they operate. And I, I don't know if they're prepared to, to send something to us by the 20th, but I think that that, that's their current focus. And they also are aware that D L S tab, um, I've given them the timeline of that, which is hopefully early September.
Right. Well, that was the complimentary piece in tab. Whatever tab is producing, we don't anticipate that.
I don't think it would, it would be, I don't think it would impact October.
Got it. Thank you, Melissa.
Well, now you've prompted me, yeah. Uh, the R O P, Local Rapid Recovery Program, has a final report due to us on Wednesday, September 15.
Hmm.
Um, like, just shooting blind here, but there's nothing out for that that we would expect to put into the warrant from that final.
So, well, let me pull up, um, I mean.
I hit, I hit the bullseye.
So some of the, the capital discussion to, to Mr. Heron's point, uh, I am still waiting on, on the school request.
Yeah.
It was discussed with them and I, I think the timeline, you know, everybody was comfortable with, uh, tho- those are forthcoming. And I did see from, um, it's a caution that, uh, they're working on that and that should be coming. So what I have at the moment and what I discussed the other day with the Capital Subcommittee of just going through these, this list, um, is sort of the, these top four here are from the facilities director, uh, excuse me, facilities manager. He presented sort of the backup, all of which is, is included here and you have access to this as well. Oops. Hit the wrong button there. Um, and so these four requests all have the backup from him in there. If you have any questions on that, um, we'll, we'll obviously get into this when we get into the warrant in this article, because you'll be the one, uh, placing these on here. Uh, Chris May also presented this I T request. Sean Reese and I have discussed this request, which will be presented. Uh, Chief Stone has his normal vehicle requests. Uh, Chief Cassidy presented all four of these requests. Um, one of which, uh, is also in the ARPA pipeline. Um, and then the reason that I, I just got into this based on the question that you asked is that one of the, the items that the facilities manager is interested in, but is also an ARPA request at the moment, which has not been addressed yet, has not made it on because of the, the numerous requests, is related to, uh, design planning on the wastewater treatment facility. Um, and to your point, what I, and I got an update the other day that they're not ready yet, but I'm with, um, I am waiting with bated breath. We got subject, we got a subject matter expert, which is Beta, um, looking at the capacity of our wastewater treatment plant and what that may mean if the town wanted to potentially link it to the downtown area. That is professional service being provided to the town and no direct cost to us through the L R P program. And that will be, again, so do I think it impacts October necessarily? No, but all of these things are now intertwined.
Okay.
Um, ARPA may be the best way to address that because wastewater.
Yeah.
Infrastructure is clearly defined in ARPA. Um, but it's also an asset of the town that, that, you know, whether we wanted to ever link it to downtown or not, is an asset that we have to maintain.
And we were aware that we needed to modernize it.
Yes, I mean, it's, it's now 20 years old.
Okay. All right. So there's a path to getting onto the warrant. I see that you put it in.
Yeah, I, my heart's not.
And this is very much draft, obviously.
Yeah. Well, I saw the town hall doors and, oh wait, this is actually what? But I see the second part's town hall.
The doors are in.
You didn't want to go through that again.
No.
Um, okay, so, um, I'm, I'm, questions or comments on that?
Good.
We're all set. All right.
And if anything, again, if there's anything that, uh, you, uh, hear of, that you're aware of, that isn't on this list, please just let me know and we'll, uh, warrant is set to close on September 20th, 4:00 P M.
Okay. So we'll move on then to your comments, Travis.
You spoke a lot. Uh, one of my comments was going to be on an update from L R P from Beta on, as the S M E, the subject matter expert. So we will, uh, get that. You mentioned the date, um, on the dams, all of the work from Leonard just came in actually today. Um, and the Concom has assigned, uh, Chris Padzek as the, um, as the person on that working group. So we'll get that going and hopefully report back to the select board. Um, that is one that is on our capital list, which I mentioned previously, that we may want to discuss for ARPA funding. Um, and I would in, I would anticipate potentially that you could get into some of that conversation on Monday with the chief, uh, on how that capital list looks in your interest. Um, and then finally, uh, the financial policies that the staff put some recommendations together on our every other year update to those financial policies, which you reviewed. Um, the finance committee on Tuesday night, uh, indicated that they have some changes that they would like to, um, put forward. And they, uh, Ben suggested that they put those in writing, um, which I believe they may be, I believe based on the conversation Tuesday night, they may actually vote, uh, if they're all on the same page next Tuesday or at their next meeting. Um, at which point I think then we'll, we'll take that conversation back up. I don't really have any thoughts, um, until I see that in writing.
Um, and I just, I, I'd like to just make the comment too, that I'd love to see the finance committee come to talk to us about those changes. Because I mean, the idea here is, is we'd like to see both boards in agreement, being able to report the town document on this. So I'd like to hear what the official changes are and let them talk about them with us.
I think we discussed last week the timeline, right? We're not, we're not up against a, a deadline at the moment. Um, I think if, if we can do it with some sort of tweaks here and there, discussed in, in separate meetings and public session for, for the audience, that's fine. If we can put the groups together, I think we can certainly do that. Um, uh, however, we can get that done. And if we get a little bit cramped for time, I'd probably at that point say, all right, I mean, to, to get to the end here, um, let's put the groups together. But, um, at this point, we, we are still pretty early in the process.
I, I would really look forward to engaging with the finance committee. Um, I, I think that's a great opportunity and, um, a good step forward to what I would put out there as a basic goal, which is.
Yeah.
Um, a tribal review. So the opportunity to engage, um.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to have it be collaborative process. Towards that, uh, goal.
So yeah, if we anticipate, um, edits in writing, that can be reviewed, will be a great opportunity to engage, uh, and to attend one of our meetings and present those edits.
Um, last update is that I will be out next week, uh, the acting town administrator, which I sent a memo to the board today on, um, will be Chief Cassidy. Uh, anybody who needs anything from my office, please obviously go through, uh, Donna Muzzi. Um, and then, uh, if there's anything, Donna will make sure that it gets the chief, uh, from a public perspective. And then obviously you, you, uh, have access to the chief directly. So, uh, that's it. I have it this morning.
Which shoulder are you going to carry it on? Cause on one you got fire, on the other you have emergency management and next week you have to add, uh, acting town administrator. So you'll, you'll, well, I, I'll say it now Travis, I hope you have a wonderful time, well deserved. And, uh, we're not going to miss you. Happy night, guys.
Peace be boys. Take your car.
Oh, I'm thinking something completely, I just finished vacation with my family. I'm thinking, you gotta need a way to escape. Um, but no, you're right. I love you guys.
All right.
So, nothing else to Travis under time for this room?
That's it.
Okay, so we're going to move on to board business. And John, you got a big packet there again.
Make a motion to appoint John Drowby into Cable Access T V. His current terms expen, uh, due to expires September 20th. I mean, this is the, is this a one year term, Travis?
It's 23 years.
Right. It should be a three.
Sorry about that.
Candidate's expressed interest in, uh, reapplying, so I'll make a motion to appoint John Drowby into the Cable Access T V, work for a three year term. I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, making a motion to appoint Jan, Janet Alexander as, and Lynn Bidak as associate members to the Council on Aging. Those are one, one, I was just looking at, okay, one year, for one year terms respect.
Your motion?
Second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you to Janet, Lynn, and John for your service with the committee. These are wonderful people.
Making a motion to approve the meeting as of August 2nd, 2021. Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries.
Now, Anthony's on the green contract. In this case, this would be contracts.
I have, yeah.
To your extension.
This is at the recommendation of the, um, Gulf Horse Advisory Committee, um, to extend both these contracts to the, uh, allowable dates, which would be through December 31st, 2023.
Can they vote in on this?
Yes, they, they, uh, and they sent you some recommendations which go in a side letter.
Um, so the new end date for the concession contract with, uh, like the Fico will be December 31st, 2023. There are some items in the side letter here, um, that are, um, obviously, I presume, under agreement with Mr. Fico. And also, um, the Pike Crest Golf Course, uh, also this term will end December 31st, 2023. So I'll make a motion to approve both contract extensions as well. And I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That'd be donation. Allison Supret, uh, general donation of $400 to account number 28554145320, uh, to the Hollis and Seener Gift Fund. Motion to accept that very generous donation.
Second that. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Thank you too.
Uh, do you know if I skipped the tack or is that why?
Sure. So there's a request from, a recommendation rather, from the traffic advisory committee with a vote of seven, one in favor of installing two dangerous curb signs on Hill Street at the location of a identified dangerous curb. And this follows a petition, a hearing and, uh, discussion by tack. So again, looking for approval to purchase the two dangerous curb signs on recommendation, my recommendation.
When I put in the packet, it was an email from their clerk, uh, Drew Orton. Um, but we also get a memo from the police chief, who is the chair of tack.
Come here.
Uh, which shows the dangerous curb sign that will be purchased.
So, uh, John, do you want to make that motion or would you like?
I will make the motion as well.
Second with a.
Question.
And that is, um, budget is paying for that.
Who said?
Was it the article?
Yeah, it's a special town meeting article, 14 or 15 that had, uh.
December 20th.
Yeah, December 20th.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. All right. And last one is town hall septic contract with Blue Diamond Incorporated.
Right, and so this was, uh, we, we covered at the top, um, the, the funding for that. Uh, the only real discussion from the ARPA steering committee was sort of bringing up, um, in some way to town meeting for the auction. If we prefer to do it through town meeting, um, in October. Uh, I think my recommendation at that time would be just to, to list out as an update under, in the warrant document, um, the way that that project is closed out, just for, for clarity and, and paper trail more than anything for our own records in the future. Um, but we can certainly discuss that as we get closer to the warrant. Either way, the, the ARPA steering group recommended, um, approval of that, as, as you voted on earlier. This allows us to stay on the schedule that we had. We have an agreement with the church, um, to, to have some square footage that we didn't have on our own property. Uh, James Keith's has worked with the state, um, historical commission, um, uh, in that, you know, anytime we're, we're digging around town hall, we want to have our Ts crossed. Um, and so this would allow us to continue on the schedule that we had originally. Um, it is more than we had anticipated. Uh, we did have the, the, um, free services and, and thank you very much to Paul Sonnier for all the work he's provided to us here. Does he get his feedback on why, you know, the, the bid was higher than anticipated and right now the market, uh, per septic is, is cruising along. Um, we are also a project that, that requires prevailing wage. That in, you know, based on the feedback that we received from the vendors who pulled the information but did not put in a bid, that was a deciding factor for some of them. Um, and so we are where we are, but I think, you know, having ARPA available to keep this project on track is going to get us to have Upper Town Hall open sooner than later. Um, we're getting calls, uh, pretty much weekly basis now, uh, people requesting the Upper Town Hall, which we're not able to do until we, we get this project done. So I think it'll be good for the town and, uh, thank you very much again, Paul Sonnier and all the work that James Keith has done on this.
Okay, so, uh.
Ready, bud?
Yes, sir. No, no, no. I was thinking, did I already ask this and should I repeat myself? I hadn't asked it, so.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve, um, the town hall septic system project to Blue Diamond Incorporated to around $126,350. I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor? Aye, that carries.
No, thanks also, as Travis said, Paul Sonnier and James. And I also want to remark, this was something that came out a long time ago. I think Mark Ronin called this out about three or four years ago. And we've been operating under a, uh, a handshake agreement with the Board of Health for these last several years because the septic system is, uh, is it original? I think it is. Uh, if it's not, it's.
Well passed, it's useful.
Yeah, for sure. Um, so this really will position us well for the future. So thank you very much.
All right, so we are done with board business and move on to other business. John, do you have any other business?
Not tonight.
Ben?
Already covered.
And none for me, so I will entertain a motion to close tonight's meeting.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good night and we'll see you on Monday, August 3rd.